Right, welcome everybody. This is going to be quite an historic meeting, I think. But first of all, if I can ask whether and Judith to say some prayers for us. Thank you.
I was going to talk about Christmas today, but I realised that you have another meeting in December, so I thought I'd hold off, as it is still November. And then, as I've been watching the news over the last two days, we cannot escape that tomorrow is the long-awaited budget. We're used to budgets. Chancellors all over the centuries have stood on the doorstep of Number 11 with their red books. But I honestly don't think I can recall such a time when money has been in the news so much. Because for the past few weeks, we've been given information of what the Chancellor may or may not do. Experts explain the various choices and share views with us all. Am I reassured or am I worried? How will budgets affect our lovely local businesses, small shops, and those already struggling? We wait to hear. But budgets need to be planned, and as I was thinking about today, I'm sure this is equally a challenge for councils as it is for households. Now, we have the most wonderful shops, and of course, there's a responsibility for us all to shop locally, especially in the run-up to Christmas. And St Paul in the Bible provides very specific guidance on how Christians should approach money and stewardship, emphasising principles of generosity and accountability. It is the Christian principle of stewardship, of caring for one another and supporting one another, to be generous and to share. And so we pray. O God, our loving Creator and giver of all good gifts, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve in our communities. We ask that you give us wisdom and generosity of spirit, that we may hear the needs of those whom we serve and work together for the common good.
Thank you, Judith. As always, you're very welcome to stay for the meeting, or if you wish to leave now, you may do.
Thank you. I'm off to get into Tattersall to help out. Thank you for asking me.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for your good words, and especially reminding me about the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm a bit close to the microphone. I'd like to formally welcome a new councillor to our fold, Councillor Jan Goffey. Where is she? I can't see her. Thank you. Welcome, Jan. And I hope it all goes well for you here. And I know you've already got your feet under the table here, and you've started asking questions, which is a good thing. Thank you. And also, I'd like to say a formal thanks to Dr Malcolm Calder, who has retired from our merry throng, and we give him all our best wishes. And if Lyn would actually take those back from the council, I'd be very grateful. Thank you. Mr White, any apologies?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have a few. We've got apologies for this afternoon's meeting from councillors Ball, Seles and Watts. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Item two, confirmation of minutes. One set of minutes to be approved from the meeting on the 22nd of July. Right, can I have a proposal, please? Thank you. Councillor Reid, and a second, Councillor Ewing. Thank you very much. All those in favour?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That's clearly carried for approval of the minutes. Thank you.
Item three, declarations of interest. I'd like to invite members to declare any discloseable pecuniary interests. That's a mouthful, isn't it? Other regitable interests and non-regitable interests, including the nature and extent of such interests they may have, in any items to be considered at this meeting. None at all. Thank you. Item four, communications from myself. Only to say thank you to all those people who attended the civic service week last Sunday. I think it was quite an entertaining service and a little bit different to what we normally had. And I'd like to say again, thank you for all those people for turning up and hopefully enjoying themselves after that. Right. Item five, I have no items brought forward for this meeting. Item six, public questions. There are no public questions submitted to this meeting. Item seven, which is questions on notice. There are no questions on notice received from members. No motions on notice received from members. Which brings us on to item nine, devolution and local government reorganisation. Councillor Ewing's to introduce the report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members, and a special welcome to Councillor Goffey. Jan and I have known each other for many, many years, and I look forward to her being amongst us as members, and hopefully she'll enjoy her next two to three years, depending on how long the government say we're going to be here. Personally speaking, I would actually like to say a real thank you to my very special dapper man, as I always called Malcolm. He was a man who was full of the best interesting stories you could possibly ever want, and Mark thought he'd met his soulmate in somebody who could recount stories and regale us with rugby stories going back to the 60s and 70s and playing rugby with JPR Williams. We were very lucky to have Councillor called with us, and I know that Councillor Daniel will take forward our very, very best wishes to him, and with lots of love from me to him. Thank you. Right, everyone. Normally, as you know, I'm an ad lib woman, but for today, it's a bit more serious, so there's no ad-libbing. Well, there'll be a little bit, because there has to be. It's me. So the chief exec will probably sit on baited breath, no pun intended, Mr Bates, but we will go. So, as the leader of West Devon Borough Council, I am proud to stand, metaphorically speaking, before you and share our bold proposal for local government reorganisation. Reimagining Devon, believe in better. This proposal provides a detailed, well-reasoned and inspiring vision that charts a path towards a positive future for our county. It is not just a response to a government invitation, it is a collective vision shaped by the voices, needs and aspiration of our communities and their residents. Devon is a remarkable and diverse place, stretching from vibrant cities and market towns to remote rural villages and stunning coastlines along with Dartmoor National Park. Yet despite our strengths, we face challenges, financial pressures, service inequalities and the need to ensure every resident, wherever they live, can access high-quality responsive public services. In response to the minister's letter asking us to submit proposals for reorganisation, we have reimagined the councils in Devon with a view to unlocking our collective potential. We believe in better. Our submission demonstrates why this proposal is the best solution for reorganisation, delivering savings, sustainability and simplicity while creating the foundations for future success. Devon's scale, diversity and complexity demanded a rigorous evidence-led approach to reorganisation. Over the past year, councils across Devon have collaborated to evaluate possible options for local government reform. Our shared ambition was clear: find a solution that delivers better outcomes, meets the government's criteria and reflects the lived realities of our communities, building a solution for the whole of Devon. Today, we present our plan. It's to create three strong balanced unitary authorities, a new model for Devon's future, the 4-5-1 Plan comprising Torbay and Southern Devon, covering West Devon, South Hams, Teanbridge and Torbay; Exeter and Northern Devon, covering East Devon, Exeter, Mid Devon, North Devon and Torridge; and Plymouth retained as a standalone authority on its existing unitary status. This model is designed to balance local identity and accountability with the scale needed for efficiency, resilience and innovation. It is rooted in rigorous evidence, extensive public engagement and a clear-eyed assessment of what will deliver the best outcomes for our residents. We are not simply seeking bureaucratic simplification, we are seizing the opportunity to transform how we serve our communities, unlocking economic growth, driving environmental sustainability and empowering local voices through neighbourhood committees and community networks. Our proposal is financially robust, delivering significant annual savings and a rapid payback period while protecting and enhancing frontline services. It aligns with government criteria and crucially, with the hopes and expectations of the people of Devon. Key ambitions within our proposal are the delivery of localised, high-performing services, hyper-localism and accountability; a comprehensive Devon solution balancing urban, rural and coastal opportunity; transformative and integrated public services, driving reform and a fit for future NHS; economic growth and identity, placed-based prosperity and innovation; natural capital and sustainable development, environmental stewardship; devolution and voice, empowering communities and influencing at scale; balanced scale and locality, efficiency, resilience and focus; financial sustainability and payback, savings, investment and value; stronger community engagement and neighbourhood empowerment, subsidiarity and participation. Our model has been rigorously assessed against the six criteria set out by the government for local government reorganisation. One, establishing a single tier of local government. Two, efficiency, capacity and withstanding financial shocks. Three, high quality and sustainable public services. Four, working together to understand and meet local needs. Five, supporting devolution arrangements. And six, stronger community engagement and neighbourhood empowerment. Those, as we all know, are the six exam questions. Council leaders, chief executives and senior officers have worked together with input from our partners, residents and businesses, informed by extensive engagement with our communities to develop a shared vision for the future. We thank the communities of Devon for the part they have played in forming the development of this proposal. This is our moment to move beyond the limitations of the past, to create a system that is agile, inclusive and future-ready, to believe in better for Devon. Thank you for your commitment, your partnership and your belief in a brighter future for our county. Together, let's reimagine Devon. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councillor Cheedle?
First of all, I'd like to say that, for the benefit of those who might be listening in rather than those in the room, we didn't ask for this. This was a proposal visited upon us by the government, who decided to abolish this tier of government, and then interestingly asked us what the answer should be to that exam question. And that is despite this council's proud record of sound financial management and delivery of services for which we can rightfully feel proud. But that said, we have produced a compliant bid, one of the few compliant bids we understand that have been produced for the county, and worked hard to balance the needs of the people of Devon, not just those of West Devon. So I will support this bid, and I urge others to do the same.
Thank you, Councillor Cheedle. Was there a question in there?
No, there wasn't.
Thank you. Any other questions, please?
Right. I believe it is for me now to propose the recommendation. And here we go. Third piece of paper. Right, on the screens, everybody, we have the alternative recommendation to those that are in the papers that you have received, so this is an amended version. And I'm going to read them out in full, which I know I wouldn't normally, but we will today. So, the council recommends, one, we consider the 4-5-1 proposal for the reorganisation of local government in Devon by the creation of three unitary authorities as set out in reimagining Devon, believe in better, which is attached as Appendix A to your report in the agenda. Two, we approve the submission to the Secretary of State for Housing Communities and Local Government at the 4-5-1 proposal set out in reimagining Devon, believe in better, as the council's response to the Secretary of State's invitation. And I will highlight here that it is without support for the modification set out in Appendix One and titled 4-5-1 Plus. And three, that we delegate to the chief executive in consultation with the leader the power to make minor changes to the 4-5-1 proposal in consultation with the other councils who have worked in collaboration with the council. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Councillor Ewing. Thank you, Councillor Jure.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Leader, for introducing this very important subject. I cast my mind back to when the proposals for local government reorganisation were first put forward, and it's fair to say that, as Councillor Cheedle has indicated, there was some disagreement within the wider local government family, especially amongst districts, it has to be said, who have done a good job, like our district, delivering cost-effective and value-for-money services. But it became clear that this structure was going to be imposed on us. I remember very well, we had an early meeting as a council, and we determined collectively that we should try and deliver a structure that best meets the needs of all Devon residents. Can I highlight in this process the role of the leader and the chief exec and our team in, I think, providing exemplary leadership, working over many months with colleagues across the county to produce the proposal and the document that is now in front of us? To their absolute credit, all of our councillors have been kept fully informed at every stage by those that have been doing the negotiations, and I think that is exemplary. All of this has resulted in the plan that is now before us. I'm intending to support this plan because it is balanced, it has been thoroughly considered and independently sense-checked, it is financially robust, it is the result of collaboration right across Devon, and it's proposing establishing some authorities that are big enough to make the necessary economies of scale and small enough to still be able to work with their communities, and it meets the government criteria. But most of all, I think, given that this is going to be forced upon us, it gives us an opportunity to create a new council, which if we do this properly, and if those that follow us do this properly, will be outward-looking, customer-focused, lean, efficient and agile. In short, the proposal that's in front of us is professional, informed and a collaborative proposal, and I am fully prepared to wholeheartedly support it and second the motion.
Thank you, Councillor Jure. We're now open to debate, so anybody... Councillor Dexter.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do want to thank the senior leadership teams of West Devon and the leader as well, as well as the other districts as well, because there's an awful lot of effort been put in and the time has spent. And I think I agree entirely with the proposal, Seconda, about the high quality of this proposal, so I'm absolutely behind it. I just want to make one point. I'd like to step back for a moment, if I may, and consider the issue overall, because the local government reorganisation is only one part of the English Devolution Bill, which is really about the imposition of mayor oral authorities all over England, regardless of what the actual population wants or need. So the bill isn't really about devolution at all, it concerns the centralisation of power in Whitehall, and the government wants one model to fit all ways of getting local government to implement their policies. Now, I think this is actually a blatant attack on local government, but the local government reorganisation is being sold as the abolition of two-tier government. That is, a creation of unitary authority for the districts and county councils with projected gains in efficiency. In reality, this so-called inefficient two layers of local government is going to be replaced by another two tiers of local government, unitary authority with a mayor or authority sitting on top of it. And it seems to me this is really about local democracy. The scheme of local government imposed by the bill can easily weaken the local voice of a residency democracy. There's going to be a reduction in the number of councillors from, I think, 481 to 234 in our proposal, which will lead directly to distancing a government from the will of the electorate. But I have to say that this 4-5-1 proposal is the best, I think, the best that we can actually do. And I think the imposition of a reorganisation on local government by a central government runs entirely counter to the principles of devolved decision-making, and it is at odds with what works well in most mainland Europe where municipalities are more local. Having said that, we are faced now with the best solution that all this work with all the districts that we could possibly think of, and I would really commend this solution without any shadow of a doubt as the best that we can do, soundly based and the best way forward for our residents and the councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Cunningham? Sorry. Oxbury, sorry. Glasses on today.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I don't intend to repeat the detailed merits of the proposal as presented by our leader. Instead, I'd like to offer a slightly more parochial view. In life, in politics, change is inevitable. Broadly, change can be either revolutionary or evolutionary. Evolutionary change adapts and adjusts as it progresses, bad change being cast aside and good change being adopted. Our evolution was directed, sought in order to make improvements to cost-effective service delivery. Evolutionary change generally delivers improvement without undue stress and disruption. Revolutionary change is, however, different. It can be a step into the unknown. It may be well-intentioned, but it brings great uncertainty and in many cases, significant risk. We're being asked about how we change the approach to local politics, how we will change the political geography in Devon. We've been here before when we considered merging with South Hams District Council just a few years ago. At that time, we opted for a shared service arrangement, one that carried the lowest levels of risk and uncertainty while delivering real tangible benefits to our communities. I believe that we should be taking the same approach with this choice facing us today, and it is a choice, as we know, which option carries the lowest risk with the greatest levels of potential benefit. Considerable work by officers and lead members reduced the starting options to essentially two. These are the options that are the most likely to serve the interests of our communities. They're also meeting the government's brief. Of these, the so-called 4-5-1 option is preferred and is the focus of this motion. It happens to be my preferred option, too. It's the option that carries the least risk. With this option, we continue to work with South Hams District Council and bring into the fold two other additional similar authorities. We can use our collective experience to help secure a smooth transition from existing to new. On the other hand, to contemplate a union with a city-urban area is, in my view, a step that carries significant extra risk. The priorities of urban areas are somewhat different to those of our mix of small rural and wider rural communities. It delivers little by way of additional benefits. Yes, much about the future is uncertain at this point in time, however, a transition with similar communities to manage a form of evolution from two to four seems to me more pragmatic than risking a union in whole or in part with the city-urban area where priorities will be different to those of rural communities. For this reason, I'll be supporting the motion to adopt the 4-5-1 model and implore other members to do so, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Reid, sorry, I can't see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to endorse the comments made by colleagues in the room today and also thank our leader and our management team for the work that's been done. I'd like to focus on a slightly more detailed look at this loss of democracy. We note on the page of 230 showing the existing councillor ratio across rural areas. It is no surprise that for West Devon, Torridge, Mid Devon, North Devon, the number of electors per councillor is in the mid-1500s approximately, whereas Plymouth, with 57 councillors, currently has a ratio of approximately 3,400 voters per councillor. Now, we know the clear difference between working in a council area which has a high urban density and a rural thing, and I have said in previous discussions, partly based on my experience as a councillor in Scotland, where we at least had a full-time but relatively modest salary for doing the work, because Council of Stirling has a similar land area to Devon, it has a similar population, it has a similar diversity of relatively few big towns and lots of small conurbations. And I'm very concerned for the sake of our electorate and in the future that we're being asked to have only 83 councillors for the whole of what will be the forepart of this model. And we've been told in discussion that the number of councillors for the existing West Devon area could be as low as nine, maybe as high as 11. Yet currently, we have 18 wards across South, across West Devon. Of those 18 wards, there are the 31 councillors. It strikes me, and it's, I think, very important for the future, and this is, as we have been explained and clearly enunciated by the management team, we have no real control over what will happen when it gets to the shadow councillors when they're finally elected in 2027. But I think we need to have a warning flagged up very clearly amongst ourselves and to our electorate, what the implications that are. our electorate, what the implications that are. Having been elected to this council as part of North Tavistock not recently, someone said to me the other day, "In a way, you're just a super resident because you represent other people." I think that's a very clear way that we councillors should think, and I'm very concerned that the process in the future is going to be deleterious. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Greenberry-Pullan.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, you'd have to forgive me, I'm just recovering from laryngitis. I'd like to echo the thanks of my fellow councillors for the support, incredible hard work of our leadership team, not just in West Devon but other councils across Devon and the officers involved. I know the work's been demanding, and it's been noted by some, and I would agree, that the process that has been requested of us hasn't been strictly democratic in all regards. The process has demanded that our councils proceed and present based on an efficiency model, which I know everyone has worked incredibly hard to deliver, and for that reason, I do support the 451 model, and I thank everyone again for their hard work. However, my concern is that if efficiency, as presented, doesn't provide for services, then I'm concerned what the government is offering to deliver the services which historically have struggled for our residents' futures and to ensure that the services are realised to meet our residents' needs. Now, I understand we have no future guarantees, and I understand the 451 model is, without any shadow of a doubt, the very best option, with having had extensive research into the proposal that we are, I believe, backing now, and I do back that, but my concerns are as stated, and I don't think there is currently an answer, but thank you for all your hard work, and I'd like those concerns noting.
Thank you. Councillor Edmonds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to begin by thanking Chief Executive, councillor Ewings, and all the officers involved in developing the 451 proposal. It's an excellent piece of work, clear, well structured, and based on solid analysis. Officers have kept members and staff updated at every stage, and that's allowed us to make an informed decision today. As members, I'm sure we all want the same thing, a future for West Devon that protects our communities, keeps services strong, and ensures we still have a real voice in whatever new arrangements the government brings forward. For me, the 451 proposal makes sense. It keeps existing district and borough boundaries, it follows the government guidance, and it creates councils that are big enough to cope with the pressures we all face, but still local enough to understand areas like ours. The financial modelling has been developed by Mrs. Buckle, our Director of Finance, in conjunction with the other five Section 151 officers across Devon, and independent financial modelling support from KPMG and Pixel Financial Management. I do have some concerns about the likely number of councillors for our area, but I'm reassured by the proposed neighbourhood committees, which should keep local voices at the heart of decision-making. So in summary, Mr. Mayor, West Devon needs a solution that works with our geography, protects our identity, and gives our communities the best chance of strong local services for the long term. For me, the 451 proposal meets that test, and for those reasons, I will be supporting the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kimber.
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of concerns. So I'm worried about the whole LGR process, which is not the responsibility of this council, but all of the LGR proposals reduce the number of councillors, so there will be fewer councillors per resident. So I'm very concerned for vulnerable people in our communities who depend on face-to-face and human relationships to get their voice heard, so that's a big concern. And assuming the 451 proposal is supported by the government, you won't be surprised to know that I'm worried about cross-boundary working between the new unitaries in the north and south, and probably between the south and Plymouth, and it's probably not a concern for services like rubbish collection, but more of a worry for education, send, and social care. So for education, send, and social care, I'm sure boundaries will create issues where residents are not properly supported across boundaries, obviously a future concern. But I am very happy to see the 451 proposal has more councillors per resident than some of the proposals from other authorities, and I'd like to thank our leader and officers for putting together a credible plan which I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, leader, for introducing this report and motion, and for everyone who has supported so far. Members, our residents are at the centre of my beliefs and all our beliefs, that's why we went into politics, is to represent our residents, and it's everything we do as a council as well. For many years, we've worked successfully and efficiently to deliver services that matter to the residents of our community, and this has been raised before. We also have a very proven experience of collaboration. For many years, I've been on the council for fourteen years, and I remember T18, where we, it was another bit of transformation, is the word I'm trying to think of, I was going to say transition, same difference, but it shows that we can work, where we worked effectively with Southham's district council, it shows that we, as a partnership, we can deliver real benefits to our relative communities, and that experience gives me confidence that we can successfully make this the next step, it will make it work. And as was said before, it's a central government white paper, it's a central government directive is the reason why we are here, and it imposes changes on us as a council. And in response, we've engaged widely with our communities, our partners, and experts to shape our proposal that meets the criteria of that white paper and protects local interest. And I'd like to thank, as others have done, I'd like to thank officers, the chief exec, the leader, and for all their hard work in producing this excellent document. The 451 proposal, reimagining Devon, Believe in Better, is the best option for Devon, and in particular for our West Devon residents. It builds on our strong record of collaboration, respects local identities, and creates a structure that is efficient, financially resilient, and focused on delivering for residents. It's not just about reorganisation, it's about securing a better future for our communities. And three unitary authorities covering Devon will simplify governance, it will reduce duplication, and allows for us to invest in frontline services. So, members, the 451 option is pragmatic, achievable, and in the best interests of Devon, and in particular our West Devon residents. So I urge everyone to support its submission to the Secretary of State. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goffey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a very late arrival at this particular party. However, having received this document, and I do commend it, it is so detailed, the analysis is excellent, the financials are there, and it's a really, really thoroughly researched and well-written. When I was elected a mere couple of weeks ago, I had been very firmly lobbied by the small parishes around my area in the north of West Devon who were not happy with the thought that they were being cast out even further into the darkness with the proposal. However, this government is clearly determined to destroy the Shire system, which has existed in this country for hundreds and hundreds of years, and has determined that we should be a unitary authority. Having looked at all the proposals, I have been happy, happy, well, I think, actually, that the 451 proposal is a good proposal, and I support it.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. I don't know how much more I can say on this apart from to put a little bit of a, perhaps my spin on it. Having heard about LGR when it came around, it was a little bit of a shock, and I think it was to all of us in terms of where we were, and what I'd like to do is not only pay tribute to our CEO, senior members, and the role that Mandy's had in this, but actually the rest of the districts and boroughs, because basically it might be very easy to bury our heads in the sand and say, "No, no, go away, we're not going to engage in this, we don't want it." However, I have been so impressed by the way in which the districts, particularly, and boroughs, have actually seized the opportunity to seek to influence the agenda to the benefit of everybody within Devon and across Devon. As we've heard, there are many positives to this proposal, our 451 proposal, and I'm fully in support of that, because basically it does provide a stable economic framework, it balances the needs of all our communities that are present, it doesn't just focus on urban or countryside or seaside areas, it gives that good balance, it actually gives areas the ability to raise income, to remain, well, to become sustainable for the long term, while meeting the needs of our local communities and their services for them. Much has been spoken, and I do not disagree, that there is the risk that local people become a little bit disenfranchised in terms of the number of councillors from which they can talk to. But again, I see the fact that within this proposal, there is opportunities there for voices to be heard at the local level, and I would encourage both town councils and parish councils to get on board, once we know where we are, what we're doing, to get on board and engage in that conversation, to follow the lead of the districts and not bury heads in the sand, but grasp this opportunity it stands. For me, it provides the best opportunity to reset structures within our local government at county level in Devon that have been failing under the previous administration as a result of institutional inertia, ideological dogma, and a lack of willingness to embrace change in a positive way. Instead of looking out, there's been a tendency to look in, and I appreciate the backdrop of cuts from national government, but as has been shown within West Devon and South Hams, what can be achieved when people work together, collaborate across boundaries, to ensure the best for their local communities. So I do commend this 451 to members and to the council, and look forward to us being successful in the future and working to implement it. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate? In which case, you have the right to reply, councillor Ewing, if you wish.
Just very shortly, I'd actually like the reply after the vote as well, please. I would just like to say to all of you, thank you so much for the engagement you have shown within this process and within this meeting today. We have held many more events, members' briefings, unofficial meetings, all sorts, we have held everything here. There is no member of this council that could walk out of this council and say they don't know what we were going to do. So for that bit in particular, I would really like to thank Andy as our chief exec, for him and I making sure that every member knew what was going on, and if they didn't know, it was their own fault, basically, put it down, you know, Mandy's now not reading a script, she's now been Mandy, that if you don't know, it's your own tough luck, because we have offered so many opportunities. Andy has offered one-to-ones with people, we have just offered everything, I've been out ferrying parish councils, so we have worked really hard to keep our members and our public. So as you make this decision now, this is, you know, more than once in a lifetime, it's fifty years ago since government was last and councils were last reorganised, so as you make your vote this afternoon, this could carry on for the next fifty years. So it is a really important moment in time, and no pressure, guys, but we are the first one of the districts to be making this decision. So it is really, there's a lot of people listening to us, no doubt, and this is quite a monumental decision for local government. As councillor Chedall said at the beginning, it's not what we asked for, and it isn't. We were actually doing really well with our working relationship with Southham's, we were looking to expand slightly on our own anyway, we've already got working relationships with Teambridge and partnerships, so actually, we get the gist of where we're meant to be going, maybe a bit sooner than others. So for us, this isn't, you know, too, you know, off the chart to cope with, because we're already doing it. So I ask you all, if you can, put your faith in our 451 model as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Right, we come to the vote, and the recommendations are on the screen, the three-point recommendations, and so, all those in favour, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's twenty-seven unanimous in favour of the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, no, no.
Judge Anmus.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, councillors, that has been a very tricky situation that we've been in for many, many months, and this really is a historic moment. This council has voted on a proposal that, in effect, will lead to its demise, but more importantly, it gives the opportunity to build a new structure based on experience and logic, with the necessary tools and strategy to provide the services for the people and communities of Devon. I'd like to thank, as everybody else has today, thank Andy and the SLT and Mandy for all the hard work they've done over the past few months, they've done a ridiculously, lot of work in a ridiculously, ridiculously short space of time, and I don't know how that has happened, but they are extraordinary people, so thank you very much indeed, from myself and the council.
Mr. Mayor.
We shall move on. Councillor Ewing.
Thank you. I would just like to thank at this part of the meeting, in particular, Andy. He has been amazing on his journey of leading this council, but also leading the districts. The district chief execs have been, as I call it, as I think I've said to you before, they go to school on a Wednesday, and they were giving up a full day of a Wednesday to basically go into a classroom for the day and to sit and go through, you know, page by page, line by line, formulating this and everything else. And then Lisa got involved, our Mrs. Buckle, as the leading Section 151 officer, working with all the other Section 151 officers across the districts. Now, for me, it made things very easy, because I used to say to others, "Don't you trust your Section 151 officer when people have sort of said about the figures?", because effectively, if that's what people were saying, that means they didn't trust their own, let alone not trust our Lisa, but we all know she's the best. So thank you to them. Drew has been another one, governance, what a subject. Drew has been working with a couple of the districts, and I think East Devon in particular, wasn't it, as well, with Andy Wood, for the work they've done on the governance, democratic process, and all the rest of it, and believe it or not, there's an awful lot about governance in this. And she's not even in the room now. Catherine Pearce has been absolutely amazing, integral, and everything else to this, and I really wish she was in the room. I really wish she was in the room, because she needs to know how amazing she has been through this process. She has kept them all sane, particularly when everybody's thrown everything at her and said, well, can you put that into something? And the hidden part of this document is, we, as West Devon and South Hams, we produced the document. We did all the formatting, we did all the pictures, we did everything like that. That came down to South Hams and West Devon. For example, North Devon have dealt with all the comms. But doing the design and et cetera, that came to us. So a big thank you to Jason Elson, it is right, Jason, isn't it? Yep. Jason Elson and his team. I have spoken to him, I think a couple of weeks ago I rang him when I first saw it, to say how brilliant it is and how representative it is of the whole of Devon. So I think South Hams and West Devon, we have an awful lot to be proud of with the contributions we have put into this document. And those members of staff really need to be praised. And as for us leaders, mere mortals that we are, we have gone along, we have placed challenge where challenge has been needed. But the one thing that I can say that is truly impressive, nobody has fallen out with each other. We have stuck together like glue, whether it's the chief execs, the senior leadership teams of seven authorities and seven different political leaders, me being the complete minority. But we have stuck together and we have worked really hard at sticking together. And to me, that is more important, because we can all go into a room and basically have a beer with each other with no animosity whatsoever. And I think that is a huge achievement for the pressure that has been on everyone, that we've stuck together like glue. So Andy, please take my thanks back to all the team and everyone else, because I, as a leader, am truly proud to lead West Devon, sort of South Hams with Dan, and he would say the same here, that of our joint service team, we have done a really, really good job of putting this all together. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ewing. I'm sure we all appreciate that and would say the same thing, but thank you very much for all the work you do. I think, Andy, you can press the big red button there. Thank you. Okay, back to the business as usual. So we're on item 10, which, appointments to council bodies. Councillor Ewing's to introduce report.
Right, sorry about that, I've got so much paper today. This is a self-explanatory paper of a few changes that we need to make due to the election that was held recently. So the recommendation, as you can see on the screen, that councillors recommended to with immediate effect and for the remainder of the 2526 municipal year, appoint councillor Jan Goffey to serve as a member of the overview and scrutiny committee, to appoint councillor Alistair Cunningham to the role of overview and scrutiny committee chairman, and appoint councillor Sam Wakem to the role of overview and scrutiny committee chairman, vice chairman, sorry, Sam. Frightened the life out of her. So I would hope that all members would be able to support these recommendations. I beg to move.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, sorry. Have a second, I was just going to say...
Right, recommendations proposed and seconded. Any debate? That's the jury.
Thank you. Can I very briefly, obviously, record our appreciation as well of councillor Calder's service. He's been an excellent councillor in slightly difficult circumstances and always been in good humour and a very valuable member of the council. And could also record, and I'm sure the leader will agree with me, our thanks for councillor Kimber for his time as chair of the ONS committee, where I think he's done a very balanced and professional job in carrying out those duties.
Thank you. Any further? In which case councillor Ewing, do you want to say anything?
No, but apologise to councillor Kimber. I'm really sorry, I should have said. It was just in a muddle with all my papers. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Right, the motion is as on the screens, three points. Go to the vote. All in favour?
That's unanimous, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, item 11, the committee minutes, please. Overview and scrutiny committee meeting, councillor Kimber.
Right, call me unawares. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the overview and scrutiny committee, held on the 24th of June 2025, be received and noted. They are ONS 1/25 to ONS 11/25 and can be found between pages 173 and 177 of the published agenda papers. Have a second, please.
Thank you. Do we vote on this? Just noted. Thank you, that's noted. On 11B, Development Management and Licensing Committee Minutes, councillor Chedle to present.
I move that the minutes of the meeting of the Development Management and Licensing Committee, held on the 1st of July 2025, 16th of September 2025, 7th of October 2025, be received and noted. They are minutes DMNL 825 to DMNL 1425, DMNL 1525 to DMNL 2125, and DMNL 2225 to DMNL 2825. They can be found between pages 179 and 184, 185 and 189, and 191 and 193 respectively. Can I have a second for that? And that's a question.
Councillor Reed. Thank you. That is all noted, Mr White? Thank you. Item 11C, Audit and Governance Committee Meeting, councillor Dexter.
I move that the minutes of the meeting, excuse me, of the Audit and Governance Committee, held on the 22nd of July 2025, be received and noted, with the exception of recommendation AC12/25. They are the minutes AC1/25 to AC13/25 and can be found between pages 195 and 200 of the agenda papers. Is there a second there? Thank you.
Thank you. There is one recommendation.
Yeah. I think in respect of the recommendation, AC1225, I propose the following, as on the screen. Council recommends, council be recommended to, one, adopt the revised councillor complaints process, as attached at appendix A of the presented agenda report; two, delegate decisions on initial assessment to the monetary officer in consultation with the committee chairman or vice chairman and the independent person; and, three, delegate decisions on investigation by the investigating officer. That concludes, there have been no breach of the code, to the monetary officer in consultation with the chairman or member of the Audit and Governance Committee nominated by the chairman and the independent person. Could I have a second there, please? Obviously not.
Councillor Johnson, thank you. We'll go straight to the vote on that. All in favour?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That's unanimous, the recommendation. Thank you.
Finally, on 11D, Hub Committee Meetings, councillor Ewing's to present.
I'm really sorry, this is really long again. You're going to be so sick and tired of my voice today. Right, I move that the minutes of the meeting of the Hub Committee, held on the 9th of September 2025 and the 4th of November 2025, be received and noted, with the exception of minute HC4425. They are minutes HC2525 to HC3525 and HC3625 to HC4725 and can be found between pages 201 and 204 and 205 and 210 of the published agenda papers. May I have a second, please?
Have a bit of a second.
Thank you. The council be recommended, one, to continue the 202526 Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme for years 2026 to 2027, as set out in the presented agenda report. Two, the delegated authority be given to the head of revenues and benefits to agree the uprating of the working age regulations incorporated into the Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme, in line with those published by the Department for Work and Pensions. Three, to continue with effect from the 1st of April 2026, the 202526 Council Tax Discounts, namely, A, the discount for unoccupied and substantially unfurnished dwellings is 100% for a maximum period of one month; B, the discount for unoccupied and substantially unfurnished dwellings for after month to one year is zero; C, the discount for unoccupied dwellings which require major repair work to render them habitable is 50% for a maximum period of 12 months; and D, the discount for unoccupied furnished dwellings, second homes, is zero. Four, to continue with effect from the 1st of April 2026, the 202526 Council Tax premiums, namely, A, an empty homes premium of an additional 100% is levied on properties that have remained unoccupied and substantially unfurnished for at least one year and less than five years; B, an empty homes premium of an additional 200% is levied on dwellings that have remained unoccupied and substantially unfurnished for at least five years and less than 10 years; C, an empty homes premium and of additional 300% is levied on properties that have remained unoccupied and substantially unfurnished for over 10 years; and D, a second homes premium of 100% is levied on unoccupied furnished dwellings. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ewing. We'll go straight to the vote on that. Sorry. Sorry. Second, eh? Thank you, councillor. All right, we'll go straight to the vote on that. All of those in favour?
That's just unanimous. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr White. Right. Not quite half an hour. We've done very well. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your participation. And as I say, this is a historic moment. So thank you, thank you for your debate and all your questions and everything else. Thank you, councillor Ewing. You've probably lost your voice by now. So that's the end of the meeting. Thank you.